Good morning. With a call to order, the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Birmingham, City Council Chambers, 3rd floor, City Hall. Today is June 16, 2015. The official starting time for this morning's meeting is 9:46 a.m. This morning, we have the invocation done by Bishop Calvin Woods. And the pledge of allegiance will be done by Counselor Sheila Tyson. If she's not here, I will do the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Our Father in Heaven, we are so very grateful for mine which instructs us that you are the giver of life and you're the giver of life eternal. We are very grateful for this and another opportunity to fellowship with our brothers and our sisters as we all, in the way that you've appointed us, strive to carry on the work of this city, of this kingdom. And we have an awareness that in spite of the mountains, the rivers, and everything that we are faced with, we've learned that your grace is sufficient. Above everything else, we know that you love us and care for us. Thank you for the dynamics of that power. Keep us forever in your care. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Bishop for that prayer this morning. Ms. Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember Lundee. Councilmember Rafferty.
Good morning.
Morning sir. Councilmember Rafferty.
Present.
Councilmember Scales.
Good morning.
Morning. Councilmember Tyson. President Austin. President Protem Roberson.
Present. Approval of the minutes from previous meeting, March 17th through the 20th, 17th, and the 24th, 2015. Do you have a motion for approval of minutes?
Second.
That's Rafferty and Abbott.
Rafferty.
Ready for the vote?
Voting should be open. Okay, gotcha. Councilmember Lundee. That vote should be up.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. The item passes unanimously. The minutes approved for March 17th and 24th, March 24th, 2015. Minutes not ready for March 31st, 2015, through June 9th, 2015. At this time, we'll have communications from the mayor. Bonjour.
Bonjour Monsieur. How are we this morning?
Good.
This past weekend was something outstanding. So if you enjoyed music, you listened to the beat of Garth Brooks for three concerts, they were all three sold out. If you like fights, then you saw a tremendous fight at Barto Arena, sold-out event, as well as Barbara Motor Speedway, if you like speed. So Mr. Chairman, over the past weekend, we had a great time. Everybody was excited. That's our report for today.
Outstanding report, Mr. Patton. That's probably a record for us here at council meeting.
Oh yeah.
It is. Any council members have any reports for the mayor's office at this time? Council Scales' name is up. Then Council Rafferty.
Thank you, Mr. Protem. Mr. Patton, in the mayor's absence, good morning. I do want to make you aware that we still, on our main thoroughfares, particularly where this food giant is located, we do need the East Felice Precinct with your authorization, sir, to assist us in this regard because now, where it had been two or three, I don't know if Council Rafferty is familiar with this as well, now we have like a truck stop, a man-made truck stop that is there. And this is what causes potholes in these parking lots where the few shopping centers that we do have open are located. And so, Food Giant off of Parkway East, China Buffet, the old China Buffet, which used to be shown these years ago, still have 18 wheels that are parked out there as well that need to have a citation. They need to be ticketed. I've asked for this, I know at least four to five times, but nevertheless, I think maybe the sixth or seventh time gonna be a charm. The other thing that I wanted to bring to the mayor's attention is about these various businesses that have decided to put their signs on the right-of-way. They have them on the utility poles, and now they're putting them on the stop signs, the various stop signs. So if it's a yield sign, stop sign, that's located on Parkway East, on Carson Road, off Edwards Lake Road, on Huffman Road, and also I saw some on Springville Road. Also at the intersection of Edwards Lake Road and Springville Road, where there is the Huffman Neighborhood Association sign, that whole little area over there has now begun to overgrow. So it is overgrown, and we do seek the mayor's assistance in that. The last thing that I wanted to bring to your attention has to deal with some of the overgrown lots, and I do know that if we have undeveloped land, that we can't hold those property owners to task at this point. But if you don't mind to have the law department to update me on where we are, hopefully on a state level, we do need some assistance. I think it's gonna provide the city as a whole some type of relief because we can't do anything on people's personal property, but that has become an issue. So I thank you, Mr. Patton, and matter of fact, your ear should have been hot. I've been talking very nicely a few. I told him what a wonderful soldier that you are. You're a very good soldier. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Scales. Council Rafferty?
I was just gonna let Mr. Patton know, we also had two sellout crowds at the Barron Stadium this week.
End of your report? That's a good report. Council Tyson?
Thank you, Protem. Good morning. A senior citizen, Ms. Nelson, lives at 512 3rd Street West. There's a burnt-down house next door to her house, 508 3rd Street West, with a overgrown lot that is just, it has rodents and snakes. I went out there just to make sure that she was okay, and I was actually scared to get out of my car. I seen a rat look like a possum. Now, that is just ridiculous, and this lady has to go to the doctor, and I know she's scared to go to her car. That's, it's just, it just, something has to be done about that. Pearson Avenue, where it was paved from part of 17th all the way past Piggly Wiggly, the gas company or either the water company has came in and tore that street up, and I have announced it, I don't know how many times, that that need to be repaved. They only put strips, I counted them yesterday, 21 strips across that street on Pearson Avenue. You already tore up my racket pinion on Denison. I gotta have some type of transportation. There's the only grocery store over there for me to go get some groceries. So is there any way we can get someone out there to get the gas company to pave that part of the road that they destroyed? Because that was actually one of the smoothest streets in District 6, and they have actually tore that street up. And I would like to also know, is there a policy for donations being collected out on the street corners? I almost seen a, really a grown man out on My Little King and Denison, almost caused a terrible accident. It could, it would, I probably wouldn't be here today if he had a guy hit because he would, it would have knocked him on top of my car. And it's gotta be a law against that, that they are out there collecting money out there. And I guess if the children, I don't, I don't want them out there. These are grown people. It's just ridiculous. It's something need to be done about that because it's very, very dangerous. And then off of the 65 exit, they're right there, and big trucks and everything is coming off that exit. And I'm just very scared for the, I'm more scared for the people in the cars because they are taking a chance. The folks out there collecting the money, they know they, they are taking a big chance, but the people in the cars are not aware of them doting out the way they do trying to collect money. And also, I would like to know if I can get a copy of the condemnation and the demolition list for the city divided by districts. Thank you. That's the end of my...
Thank you, Councilor Tyson. Council Scales, second time.
Thank you, Ms. Protem. I forgot, a couple of others. Mr. Patton, over in the Stonehedge Community, which is off of Edwards Lake Road, we reported that there's a sewer cover, sewer covers with an S, that need to be replaced over in that community. I saw Mr. Lanier on yesterday, and he reminded me of that. He said it's been off at least about a month. He has a concern about children falling into that, that particular sewer area. We need a covering, or cover rings over there in Stonehedge. Also, at this address, Ms. Slayer's asking the city to pick up littler along Carson Road, which I've been reporting that as well. We also have a growing issue with the Alabama Thrift Store. It has become a public nuisance. One of the neighborhood officers called about it, but I'm gonna reiterate this point again on this week. Behind there, obviously, everything that they're taking in is exposed along Old Springville Road. Children walk along that route anyway to get to Huffman High School. And to make a long story short, it's gross behind there. I looked back there yesterday, it's about maybe three dumpsters. Basically, in short, if we could ask, if you don't mind, sir, asking Mr. Ron Kidd to get out there and sight these folk. It looks very unsightly. Right out there on the backside, Alabama Thrift Store, Old Springville Road, also on, on Kilo Springs or Kilo Drive, on Redstone Way, zip code 35215. Ms. Ford is asking for the right-of-ways to be cut there as well, and then I've already reported, Mr. Carl Key, again, wanted to make sure that you all knew about, or the city was aware of the uncleanness that is right there at Old Springville Road and Edwards Lake Road. That'll be all that I have for you thus far. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilor Scales. Council Rafferty, second time.
Thank you. And actually, I just wanted to support what Counselor Tyson said because I really haven't pursued this before, but it has bothered me when they're out there doing collections in the middle of Roebuck Parkway and Highway 11, which is four lanes or six lanes in all directions. Edwards Lake Road and Highway 11 is also a problem, and John Rogers Drive and Highway 11. So I have to agree with Council Tyson, there needs to be some kind of a ordinance, not a policy, but an ordinance, regulating whether or not these people can do it. And if they're, if they're gonna do it, or if we're gonna allow it, they have to be permitted and go through proper security protocol.
You want to speak? Okay. To my understanding, there is an ordinance already in place. Council Rafferty, and if we wanna seek some input, maybe from the law department on that ordinance, we can get that ordinance to us. Yes, Council Tyson, second time?
I volunteer to create one.
There's one already in place.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we need enforcement.
Well, I add some teeth to it.
We need teeth too. Thank you, Councilor Tyson. I'm gonna share a point of personal privilege, and I think I ended that council meeting on last week stating this. Back-to-back weekends, and I know Mr. Patton referenced this past weekend, but with Steel City Jazz Festival, the Sliced Music Festival, three days of the Alabama Symphony at Railroad Park, Barron's had a home stand, as Council Rafferty referenced earlier this past week, with Garth Brooks, three sold-out concerts at 17,000 people per concert at the BJCC, along with a WBC heavyweight championship fight at UAB Barto Arena. Now, you can't tell me there's nothing to do in Birmingham, Alabama. And for your naysayers out there, you cannot say there's nothing to do in Birmingham, Alabama. There were other activities. I heard Work Play was sold out. I heard some other community activities going on these past couple of weekends. It was just a fabulous two weekends, the past couple of weeks for Birmingham, Alabama. To my understanding, I had a meeting with the CVB on yesterday, the economic impact. Mr. Patton was over $4 million just for the fight alone. You really can't gauge the concert at the BJCC and how big that was, because that's a lot of local attendance, but it was just a great weekend overall. I wanna thank the Birmingham Police Department, Public Safety, for your due diligence. To my understanding, that Saturday, between the Garth Brooks concert, an hour turnaround of 17,000 people going in and 17,000 people going out, it was efficient, flawless. And that takes a lot of coordination, logistics, and planning to prepare for the amount of people we had going through downtown Birmingham and throughout our city this past weekend. So it was absolutely awesome. And I think that's why we serve as elected officials in this body, to support endeavors like we've seen take place the past couple of weeks, and we continue to do so. So I'm excited, and we are the magic city, so let's continue these efforts moving forward. And there's some other work we have to do. I'm not gonna sit up here and think everything's just lovely, but these past two weekends were awesome. So at that, we will go ahead now. Any nominations, Mr. Clerk, from the board, Board Agency?
Not this.
Okay. Thank you. And at this time, we'll take consideration for the consent agenda?
Okay. Consent agenda starts on page two with items from one and two. Page 19, we pick up with items three and four.
Okay.
Page 20, you have items five, seven, eight, and nine on consent. Page 21, we have items nine and 10 on consent. Page 22, we have items 13 through 16 on consent. Page 23, items 17 through 21 are on consent. Page 24, items 22 through 26 are on consent. Page 25, items 27 through 30 are on consent. Page 26, there's been a request for item 31 to be withdrawn.
Okay.
And then we have items 32 and 33 on consent. Page 27, items 35 and 36 are on consent. And we have a couple of addendum items, but none are on consent right now.
Okay. Any council members like to speak to consent agenda at this time? Council Rafferty?
Thank you.
Please.
Okay. Well, on item six, I wanted, I'm gonna defer that to you, Council Abbott, because I think I need to get the direction of budget and finance before moving on that. Well, it's-
It's a first reading.
It's a first reading. We have to bring it before us, but-
It has been before consent.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. On page 21, items 11 and 12, add to consent.
Any objections to items 11 and 12?
On page 27, items 34 and 37.
On page 27, what items?
No, I objected. Item 34, page 27.
It's already on consent.
34?
34 is on consent.
Okay, I'd like to-
Hold on, Council Rafferty's speaking at this time.
That's okay. It's not on consent online, but if there's an objection, I don't have a problem leaving it off.
I don't know why.
And then-
Maybe on the dress.
Pardon?
Sorry.
Is it, is it consent or not?
There's a, there's a page that got mixed up, different people. So how, how would you like it?
Okay. No, I'll leave it off because there's an objection to it.
Okay.
And then on the addendums, items 41, 42, and 43.
Okay.
To which one?
Council Abbott objects to all items 41, 42, and 43. They will not be on consent. Any other council members like to speak to the consent agenda at this time? Yes, Council Rafferty?
Excuse me, I would like to remove item nine from consent. Council Hoyt would like to delay that for one week. I mean, I know he's not here, but he sent word because he said we're not quite ready.
I talked to staff, and they had deferred, said they had met with the law department on Friday, Mr. Bentley, and the verbiage was in order as far as Friday afternoon was concerned, and Council Hoyt was fine. Do you know-
Dr. Lee just came in a few minutes ago and said to hold up. So now, item nine, so-
And this staff confirmed with me this morning-
Okay, well, if he's, if, maybe that was an old message.
Okay. So he did meet with the law department on Friday. Yes, and everything's in order.
It's a timing, that's why he has to move.
Okay, it's a timing matter, so it hasn't moved forward. Okay.
Okay, well, never mind then.
Thank you. All right, any other items? What do we, Council Scales?
Thank you, Ms. Protem. I'd like to remove on page 19, item number three. I'd also like to remove item number four, page 19. On page 20, I'd like to remove item number seven. And I had one more, sir, if you'd just bear along with me, please. On item 34, page 27. I'm sorry. Uh-huh. Item 34, page 27.
That's been removed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Council Scales. Anyone else like to speak to consent agenda at this time? Seeing none, do you have a motion?
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second.
That's been moved by Abbott, second by Rafferty. Ready for the vote, Ms. Clerk?
One second, please. Voting should be open. That vote should be open.
The consent agenda passes unanimously. If you had an item on the consent agenda and it has passed, you may leave the chamber at this time. If you had an item that was on the consent agenda and is already has passed unanimously by the council, you may leave the chamber at this time. First item, Mr. Clerk?
Should be item number-
Three.
Three.
Yep.
Item three, in order to further amend the general fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015 by transferring $400,348.55 from human resources, professional fees, medical, and appropriating $400,348,055 to police professional fees, other, by Ion Monitoring Services.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second, that's Abbott Roberson. The items before us at this time, for discussion. Any council members like to speak to this item? Council Scales?
First, Ms. Protem, I did have this question. Is item number three and 34 companion items? Item number three, page 19, and item 34, page 27, are those companion items?
34 is a-
They're not?
34 is-
Okay, all right, so-
They're separate items.
All right, so, because it's dealing with the same company, so that's the reason why I asked. At any rate, to make a long story short, I'm trying to figure out, first of all, with Ion, are they the only bidder? Are they the only one that bid it for this particular contract? If someone can answer that for me?
Good morning, councilors.
Good morning.
The, Adam, that's before you, is actually a part of the contract that was signed by the city back in 2008. I'm not familiar who exactly bid it on that contract, but it was a contract that was signed in 2008. We've since rebid it, and there are other people who have bid it on it as well.
Okay. Then forgive me because I wasn't here in 2008, Mr. Bernie. So this is a part of a 2008 contract?
It was a multi-year contract, yes.
Uh-huh. So it was a multiple-year contract with the lifespan of how long?
I'm not quite, I can't remember exactly how long it was for, but I know we were, Ron, do you recall if it was a five-year? I know it had a renewal clause in it which allowed us to continue it. It was either three or five years with a renewal clause.
Okay, so if it's three to five years, and let's say five years being the most, that would technically be 2013, is 2015. So what, what did we have extenuating in the clause that just permitted it to go ahead and roll over as opposed to it being rebid it out and they, that company, being the lowest bidder that bid it on this kind of contract?
I think I can address that, Counselor, a little bit. The contract was continuing because the wording in the contract did allow it to continue on a yearly renewal on a yearly basis after the initial term. We have since, about February of 2013, been working on a new contract. There's been a lot of delays involved. We're finally to the point where the new contract, draft contract, has been sent to the vendor. It's a company by the name of Hitachi. And once they mark up the contract, get it back to the law department, we hope to have that new contract for the council shortly. So we have been working on this for over two years, the new contract.
Okay. I'm gonna say that thought for my head. You've been working on the contract for two years, that's a long-
Well, I didn't say I have.
Well, whoever-
The city has.
The city has. That's a long time. That's a long time.
I know.
And, yeah, so, and if you can get someone that can do it less expensive, that's a long time to work against your own interest, but that's just me as one counselor. So then my question is this. So when does the term of this, this contract here, for example, if we approve this today, obviously, this is to assist the police department. So my question on that would be, if you are at the point where that contract has basically matured, with the exception of the acceptance from the company, Hitachi, then my question would be, once this amount has gone to the police department, is that kinda like the end of any expenditures more to this company?
Well, a lot of that depends on whether the, any issues between us and the new company can be worked out by, well, I believe this was to pay for till the end of June, Terry?
That's correct.
Okay, this is gonna be the lifespan through June. Okay, I'm asking these questions because some things keep coming up about this particular company, and I'm hoping what we're doing is that we're utilizing services and being more efficient at it at the same time. And it's still a lot of money. It's almost a half a million dollars, it's $400,000 and some change. So just wanted to, I wanted to ask, just to find out what that's all about. Thank you, Ms. Protem.
Thank you, Council Scales. Any other council members like to speak to this item? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote. Ms. Clerk?
Voting should be open. That vote should be up, Mr.-
That item passes unanimously. Next item?
Should be item number four, in order to further amend the general fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015 by appropriating $14,000 to non-departmental Roebuck New Co., $41,755.21 to non-departmental Edward Chevrolet per economic incentive agreement, the funding source being additional sales tax received.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
That's Rafferty and Abbott. The items before us at this time.
Mr. President?
Yes, Council Abbott?
We also, Council Rafferty just pointed out to me that we also need to add that it was recommended by Economic Development.
Ms. Clerk, if you can make that addition to the item, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ready for the vote?
I had a question. My name was up. I don't know what happened to him, Mr.- I had a question, my name was up, I don't know what happened to him, Ms. Protem.
Okay, there it is. Counselor Scales?
Yes, sir. The reason why I pulled it off is because I want to make sure, are these ba, basically, where we did some kind of tax abatement, I do remember about Roebuck NewCo, but is that we're receiving this money based upon sales or tax money received back to the city as a part of a tax abatement? Okay, I wanted to make sure of that. Thank you, Ms. Protem, we can proceed with the vote.
Ready for the vote, Mr. Clerk?
Voting should be open. That vote should be up.
That item passes unanimously. Next item?
Should be item number six. In order to authorize the establishment of an additional employment benefit to eligible employees and officials for the City of Birmingham under which all eligible employees and officials, as part of the overall compensation package, will provide an additional diminished, uh, fringe benefit of an annual employees and family fund day in an amount not to exceed a sum equivalent to twenty-five dollars per eligible employee and official of the City of Birmingham, and we need you to see if we want to pass it today.
This is item of permanent operation, so we need unanimous consent. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move approval.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, now we need to get it before-
Any motion for the item?
I move the item.
That's Abbott Parker. Any discussion? Counselor Rafferty?
Thank you, yes, and I was in Budget and Finance and heard this presentation. The only hesitancy I have, and I just wanted, Mr. Patton, for you to clarify it to the general public, making an ordinance change for an event inclusion, is this going to be a permanent event or is this a one-time occurrence? And how will the funding of it go forward?
Depends on how well it goes. If it goes well, it'll be a continuing event. If it's a flop, then we probably won't continue with it.
So, then would we revoke the ordinance?
I don't think we have-
If the event fails?
Let me let legal speak on it.
Uh, yes, it's set up as a continuing event, uh, it could be canceled by repelling the ordinance.
Okay.
Is that it, Counselor Rafferty?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Scales?
Ms. Protem, is this the first, I'm, I'm, I don't want to take anything for granted. Is this like the first annual, uh, employees, okay, so not to sound anal, because I do support the employees, that goes without saying. I prefer to get it in their check as opposed to a fund day, but it's just me. Now, with that having said, why would we do an ordinance of permanent operation when we don't know how the first year is gonna work? I would tend to think that the first year would kind of give us the tone of should we take such a drastic move to make it a, a permanent operation? If you don't know how it's gonna be, and you just said that in terms of if it's a flop, then you, I, I don't understand, why would we not see how the first one would go and then make such a heavy move moving forward because it's proven to have some kind of validity? Someone answer?
Yes, ma'am. The reason it has to be done this way is because it's categorized as an employee benefit. Employee benefits have to be enacted this way.
So, it's a benefit to have a fund day?
Yes, ma'am, it is. For the employees.
I'm gonna keep the daylight, because I know if they're talking to us about going through budget hearings and they're talking about benefits, and we're gonna make a mode of permanent operation for a fund day as a part of a benefit package, okay?
Yes, ma'am, it's exclusive to the employees and their families.
I understand.
Kind of like our health insurance.
Kind, kind of like health insurance, it's sixty percent, but in this case, it's not sixty, I understand. Okay, Ms. Protem?
Uh, thank you, Counselor Scales. Counselor Tyson?
What about the employees that work on a Saturday? How would they attend this event? Uh, because are every employee gonna be able to reap the benefits of what is here, twenty-five thousand dollars? And how much will it total up to be if you, if you charge each one twenty-five thousand dollars, I mean, twenty-five dollars? How much is the total amount of money?
Um, no, 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 let's, let's go back. Uh, we're not charging anyone anything. We're saying it would be up to twenty-five dollars per individual. And we had to have a number in the document, okay, the number could have been fifteen dollars, number could have been twenty dollars, numbers could have been fifty dollars, but we put twenty-five in there as a safe measure. Right now, I can't see us spending over about eight or nine thousand dollars on this event.
I would rather see-
Secondly, you asked about other employees. If you recall, the last two years or three years, we had something that crossed flags. The complaints from a majority of the employees was that we work during the week, we're off on the weekend. Why can't we have it on the weekend when more people are off? I would think that persons who work on Saturdays, their supervisors may give them a couple of hours to take their lunch break, to go over there for a couple of hours and return back to their jobs, but you're not gonna satisfy a hundred percent of a hundred, of, of all people. We do have people who work twenty-four seven. So, the masses of these people will be off.
So, you still don't know the total amount of money?
It'll be less than ten thousand dollars, I can tell you that.
Yes, Counselor Scales?
Thank you, Counselor Abbott. Then I have a couple of questions. One, I noticed that it says, uh, per eligible employee. So then my question would be, is what makes that employee eligible? Like, who shows up? Who's eligible to show up? Because it's twenty-five dollars a person, I get that, uh, but we have over four thousand city employees, so who's eligible? I want to understand, what is the objective of what we're trying to do? Because if it's to increase morale, being that we're talking about a sixty percent increase on health benefits, I don't see a fund day curing the, a, a lack of morale, so I'm just trying to figure out, what is the objective? Because if it was just an event, to be frankly honest with you, I'd be very supportive of it, if it's just an event. But you're talking about a mode of permanent operation, which means that we plan to do this all the time, so then that brings me to who's eligible, what is the objective, who can actually attend this event? If someone can answer all three, that'd be very nice.
All right, I, I may have to ask you to repeat a couple of the questions.
Okay, who's eligible?
Who's eligible? Uh, any employee that would be eligible for benefits would be el, and that, that includes officials. Any employee and official that would be eligible for benefits would be eligible to attend this party.
Say it again?
Any employee or official who's eligible to receive benefits would be eligible to receive, uh, to attend this party. Not all employees and officials are eligible to receive benefits.
Okay, so basically, if you don't receive benefits, basically meaning that you're a full-time employee, no benefits, no fund day? That's what makes you eligible, is that you have benefits?
Right, there's constitutional restrictions on providing this activity or this, this type of funding for employees and officials. Uh, the only way we can do it would be to provide it as a benefit of employment. And only those employees and officials that are eligible for benefits would be able to, uh, attend the party.
Attend the what?
The, the fund day.
Okay. All right, my next question is, what is the objective? Why are we having this?
It's a reward to our city employees who do outstanding work every day.
Okay, it's, it's a reward, so it has nothing to do with morale or any of that, it's just a reward?
Morale, reward, it all goes together.
Okay. What happens at this event? I'm just interested in-
The picnic.
It's a picnic. Okay. I'm gonna be very kind today. I, I, I still, I'm telling you, as this counselor, and we have employees who just came before this council, mind you, everyone, a week ago, and talking about sixty percent on this, and the city is gonna reward them with a fund day. Okay, thank you, Ms. Protem.
Thank you, Counselor Scales. Any other discussion related to this item? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote, Mr. Clerk?
Voting should be open.
Voting box is not?
Uh, I have three people already.
Okay.
I'm missing Counselor-
Yes, for Roberson.
Okay. I'm missing Counselor Tyson. Thank you, that vote should be up.
All right, it passes with one abstention from Counselor Scales. Next item?
Should be item number seven. A resolution authorized the mayor to execute documents required for the city to apply for the Body, Worn, Camera, Pilot Implementation Program grant, application in amount of six hundred thousand dollars for a hundred and fifty cameras and to take any and all actions and execute such documents as are appropriate and necessary to accept the grant on behalf of the City of Birmingham if awarded.
Do you have a motion on this item?
Mr. President, I'm of approval.
It's Abbott Parker, the items before us for discussion. Counselor Scales?
Yes, sir, I took it off, actually, because if the city can be awarded this, I wanted the public to know, as opposed to it being on consent this morning. I thought that that was a wonderful, wonderful, uh, city initiative, if we can be awarded this grant. I think that the citizens need to know that there is an attempt, at least for us to be able to get it. So, that's why I took it off consent, Mr. President.
Well, thank you, Counselor Scales. I do have one question for Chief Roper as it relates to this item. I know this is a grant, um, that we've been rewarded as a city, and, um, and they've got a hundred and fifty cameras that will be provided for our men and women, uh, on the police force. Is there any additional cameras that would be purchased, uh, that, or are we looking to purchase to help support this entire police department?
What you have before you today is the, we're asking the council for approval to apply for that grant.
Okay.
It just, the, the solicitation just came out about a week ago, the president has been talking about it, and so they're going to award grants to twelve cities. So, we want to make sure Birmingham is in the running.
Sure.
So, we're applying for that one, if you all approve. And then second, we have already started implementing a, a body camera program, but if the federal government will help us, we're all for that. So, yes, sir, he, a, as it stands now, we have body cameras. Our evening and night shift patrol officers are wearing cameras now. But that's just phase one, so we still have a ways to go to really get the program as robust as we would like it so that every uniformed officer and every task force officer has a camera, uh, in this, in this day and time.
I'll stand, let me ask you this, I, I just, um, attended the Alabama League of Municipalities Conference, and this was a big discussion amongst municipalities across the state. There are different programs that are out there. Uh, some cities are leasing cameras and they're able to save tremendously on the cost of the actual cameras. Uh, what are your thoughts as far as purchasing or leasing those cameras?
Well, we, the, the manufacturer we're dealing with, Taser, who also makes our Taser, so we have some, some synergies there. In the past, with our Tasers, there was a camera mounted on the Taser. But unfortunately, you would only see video of a tasing action. It wasn't a, a, a full shift, full implementation type, type camera program. So, what we're doing now, the first set of cameras we purchased, but we're in talks regarding whether leasing or purchasing is the best way to go. There are some benefits for both. Uh, we're open for the most cost-efficient, uh, method. The ones we have put out in phase one, we purchased those because there was no lease option at the time.
I got you.
But now, since this is a national discussion, you're starting to see more options come on the table.
And, and the cameras that you're looking to purchase or lease, are they the head camera or the body camera? I think preferably the head camera gives you a full visual of a situation.
There, there are some benefits to both.
Okay.
Uh, we did a pilot project in two of our precincts where we had the officers test where's the best location for it. And, and, and so there's two schools of thought out there, whether it's the head, if it's on a, mounted on the, the eyeglasses or the shades, if it's on this side, you, you lose view over here unless the officer turns their head. What we're finding is a body mount is really, it's one of the best because that way, especially if the officer has to use lethal force,
Sure.
you should get a, a good view of what that officer was seeing at the time. And another benefit to what we're doing is, we can access the camera footage, I can access it from my office.
I got you.
So, if, if a use of force form comes across my desk, I can get on my computer and look at the camera footage myself. And so the command staff has that, that capability. And so, we plan to have a model program. And, and Birmingham PD is a model police department, as, as has been recognized, uh, through the years, and even more so going forward, so with the National Initiative, the Violence Reduction Initiative, the Body Camera Program, and all of that is all working together for us.
Thank you for the update. Counselor Tyson?
You really answered the question, because I was, uh, really concerned about it being on the Taser, uh, too, so that'd get them the opportunity to beat somebody up with their hands if they never pull up, you know, pull out the Taser.
I see what you're saying, yes, I see what you're saying, yes, ma'am.
I feel like it needs to be on the body, too, so they need to capture all of everything that happens. And when you distribute the cameras, will it go into the high crime areas first?
Uh, we're actually rolling out, we started out with two of the precincts, we have them in all four precincts now. And so, but West Precinct was a, a, a focus area for us because of the number of calls for service. West Precinct is our largest, East is second, so those are the main two focuses, but right now, we have them in all four precincts. We've got to finish the program, and hopefully the grant will allow us to do that, but we've also asked for funding in the budget because the cameras are, don't cost much. The cameras are extremely inexpensive. The bulk of the funding is for the storage of the data. That's where, and then the maintenance program, and so, but the storage of the data is what really costs a lot of money. And so, IMS has really helped us because our cameras would download wirelessly in the precincts, so when the officer comes into the precinct, they'll download it, they'll stick it in the dock, the docking station, and then when they come back to work, they pull it out the docking station, mount it back, and go back out on the street.
Great.
Uh, Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask one or two questions and, about the cameras, do they run all the time? How does that work? Because like, if you go to the men's room, I'm not sure you want to be-
That's right.
-taping all the people that are in there.
Yes, ma'am, my thoughts exactly.
And so, do you turn them on and off? And if you turn them off, what if you forget to turn them back on again? So, and then I was gonna ask if you're, you know, if the storage is in the cloud or you're actually having to buy equipment to back these things up and store them? And do you store everything all the time, even days when they're just out driving around and never get out of the car except to go to the restroom or get that donut and cup of coffee that you always hear about?
Yes, ma'am, we hear about the donuts quite often.
I'm sure you do.
That's why I refuse to eat them in public. So, uh, so your first question was regarding the actual videoing. No, the officers, we'll be able to turn the cameras off, because we do not want, there's two issues there. We don't want officer video of them in the bathroom, we don't need that. Second, there are some calls that an officer may go on where they're inside someone's house, and let's say the person is in various states of dress, that we don't want video on, unless it's something that's pertinent to an investigation or something like that. So, the officer has a, a tap button that they can tap it. And there's a training piece, because they have to remember to turn it on whenever they're engaging a citizen regarding some type of law enforcement action.
Yeah, I'd be the one who'd forget to tap it back again.
Yes, ma'am.
That night when I got in, I'd realize that there was nothing on the camera.
That you recorded nothing. And so, policy, supervision, training, and discipline all has to work together to, to address that issue, because it's something new. Uh, this is a whole new way of, of policing. Uh, your second question was regarding storage, storage.
Yeah.
So, that's cloud storage for us.
Well, that's good, at least we don't have to buy equipment, even if we have to buy pieces of cloud.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Abbott. Counselor Scales?
Thank you. Mr. President, now you see why I took it off consent, because I think that the public needs to know that that's what we're doing. And let me, let me ask you this, Chief, because of the fact that, uh, I'm glad you brought up the eastern section, the city period, let me just say that, but particularly the eastern section of Birmingham, because sometime I think that people think we have it made in the shade, and, uh, and the shade is so far-fetched, it, it's almost comical. I just got a call that I heard on my phone where someone broke into somebody's, uh, uh, young lady- on my phone where someone broke into somebody's, uh, a, a, a young lady's home in Roebuck and, and the, the person was still there at the house and greeted them when he got there. Uh, it is interesting. Now, with that having said, who monitors the monitor? You know what I'm saying in code, right?
Who monitors the monitor?
Okay, so let's just say I E., I am Mister or Misses Cop. And I may be doing something that I may not want someone to see. So I turn it off because I have the ability to turn it on. So after it hasn't been running for a while, uh, does someone begin to monitor that officer? In light of national things, who's monitoring the officer to make sure that there's a valid reason why you turned it off? Is there a procedure for you to call in to explain why? What, what is that all about?
Well, that once again goes to supervision. Supervisors have to engage. The policy has to be a practical, real, comprehensive policy that addresses those issues. Uh, there has to be discipline. And, and the bottom line is we recognize that every officer isn't doing everything right all the time. Across the nation, we recognize that. So supervision, policy, training has, and everyone's going through a training class. I went through the class myself. So no one can say they, they don't know because we've all been trained. And then there has to be a discipline component. So when there's a violation, we have to take appropriate action a- as a police department.
So let me ask you this, chief. I don't mean to cut y'all because I know that they would want me to be quiet. Here, here's my question. Then who crafts the policy that the officers or the department has to adhere to? Because obviously the mayor is the enforcer. Does that come before the council? Who's involved in that crafting or development of the policy in which they are to adhere to?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, our department is a national accredited police department as everyone's is aware of. The first national accredited police department in the state of Alabama, which means that our policies rise to a higher level than the average police department. There are very few police departments in the state of Alabama that put themselves through an accreditation process. So our policies are crafted, we have an accreditation unit that is linked to the accreditation units all across the nation and CALEA, the Commission of, uh, Associate, the Commission of, of American Law Enforcement Accreditation Agency. So we're linked to them. So our policies follow a national model. And then the International Association of Chiefs of Police, which I am a member, also put out model policies. So our policies meet the standard. They go out under my signature because if a person is terminated or disciplined, it's under my signature. And so once that policy is drafted, the chain of command gets a chop on it. So we review it to make sure there's nothing that is missing or if there's something that, uh, we need to tweak a little differently, I look at that policy because I'm the one that has to sign it. And then that policy is, is populated throughout the police department. Every person gets a copy. Every person gets training on it. There's a signature where they acknowledge they have received it, they understand it. And then that policy becomes the law of the land in the Birmingham Police Department.
Women's Pro Tem, and I, I appreciate you for allowing me that. The only thing I would ask, chief, is with the mayor's office approval, that I'll put it in writing if you can share with me so we can share with our neighbors. They'd be happy to know about the different things and initiatives pertaining to this that you're going to implement over there on the eastern side of Birmingham. And we don't want to embellish it. We want it to be just what you said as the chief.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, you got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Roper, for that update today.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, we're ready to move for the item. Uh, ready for the vote, Ms. Clerk.
Voting should be up. That vote should be up.
That item passes unanimously. Next item?
Item thirty-one has been redrawn, redrawn, and then next should be item thirty-four.
Okay.
A resolution accepting the lump sum proposal Interactive Video Technologies Doing Business as Ion Twenty Four Seven Three Thousand Three, Second Avenue South, Birmingham, in amount of eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars for cameras and encoders, material and installation at Vulcan Park. This being the lowest and best proposal submitted and authorize the mayor to enter into contract Interactive Video Technologies Doing Businesses Ion Twenty Four Seven LLC in substantially the form contained within the bid documents. In the course of a said proposal, providing that the total compensation payable under the contract not exceed the appropriation.
Do you have a motion for this item?
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second?
That's, uh, councillor Abbott, councillor, uh, Rafferty. Items before us, any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Clerk, we're ready for the vote.
I have one, Ms. Pro Tem.
Okay, I'm sorry. Councillor Scales.
I was, I was telling on myself. I was saying about this, uh, th- is this the same ion we just talked about a few items ago? I'm asking, Ms. Pro Tem. Okay, is this a part of this eight-year contract too? I understand they got the contract because this is a part of a, but I guess three to five-year agreement and so da, da, da. Is that gonna?
Somebody's going to answer for the mayor's office.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Uh, this, this contract is for addition to the, um, video equipment that's already being used over at Vulcan. And they're wanting to add additional cameras and video monitoring to their, uh, already existing equipment that's at Vulcan.
So is that a request of the city or is that Ion that wanted to add this to what they alre- the equipment they already have existing at that property?
It's a request of Vulcan.
It's a request of Vulcan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So would this also be considered, Mr. Patton, if you don't mind, Mr. Nichols to answer for me, is this too going to be considered with that other company?
That's really a hard question to answer. Um, I was not familiar that this was happening until I saw it on the agenda yesterday. And, um, it's really a long drawn-out explanation as to why we do certain things in public and P E P does certain things. Um, I do know that this new contract, when it is awarded, does have provisions to allow adding additional cameras for a specific amount of money per camera. Uh, I don't believe that the forty cameras that we have now under the current Ion contract includes any of these cameras. Is that correct? Yeah, I, I don't, I don't. Maybe someone from the police department who knows where those forty cameras are located will know the answer to that. Um, but there is a previ-
Chief?
Pardon me, it's me again. Uh, sir, you're absolutely correct. You're absolutely correct. The cameras that we're using does not include anything regarding Vulcan.
Okay, so this new contract, when it is awarded, will not have anything to do with these cameras?
So here's-
Even though the city's paying for them apparently.
Okay, so here's my question. If it's separate and apart and we know that we're looking for another company or have identified, let me not say looking for, we have identified another company that obviously can do the same caliber of work, probably at a lower cost, then I guess my question would be, why would we engage them on this one knowing that that company that we're looking to hire can provide the same service? So then that would also make me ask about this item. How, what is the lifespan of this contract? Is it a year or is it multi-year at X price? Because that doesn't make sense to me. If you're going to acquire another company, why, why would you go back to this one and we're trying to dissolve that relationship?
Well, that, that is a fair question. Now, what I do not know is how long the current contract that, that Ion has with Vulcan, how, how long that contract will go.
Can someone answer that for me, Mr. Patton? How long is this contract?
And I apologize, Mrs. Scales. I do not know the answer to the length of the contract with Vulcan. Vulcan submitted this to P E P as one of the, uh, facilities that we do operations for. Um, if we, if you'd like, we can get that information for you and bring this back before the council.
Okay, because that would be what I would-
Councillor Scales?
Yes.
That's your time?
Okay. Okay. Do, do, do we have a suspension of the rules or can?
Uh, motion, uh, in order, actually councillor Rafferty's name is up.
Okay.
Uh, in order to extend your time, it would take a motion of the council, uh, to, to suspend the rules to give you additional time.
I'll wait and let you come back to it.
Okay, councillor Rafferty?
I was just going to ask for clarity. Um, and I did not see the contract in here to review, but it, it was a bid, correct? Okay, and it did say only one proposal was submitted, which would indicate we would have to go with the only company that submitted a bid. Okay, I just wanted clarity. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Abbott?
Well, my understanding is what we're doing here is buying some cameras and some encoders. And so that would mean when the, when the, their, when Ion's contract was up, anyone could monitor the cameras and the equipment. So this is just the equipment. So it doesn't really matter how long their contract is because we're buying equipment in this con- this, this item. Item thirty-four is to buy cameras and encoders, which could be monitored by, I assume, Bright House if they wanted to. I understand they've just gone into the business. So, um, you know, I would be fine with delaying this a week to find out, but it's immaterial because all we're buying is materials. We're not buying the service in this item.
That is correct. It is materials, equipment and, um, training.
Yeah, so the next time it's bid, it could be monitored by whoever the low bidder is because the equipment will belong to us. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Abbott. Uh, councillor Scales, second time?
Thank you, Mr. President. Then let me just say this, from having a spouse who is also a I T person, if Ion is as smart as they have been to get these contracts from the city, then I'm sure that they're going to program their own equipment whereby only they can operate it. I mean, that would be the smart thing to do because that'd put you out of business. If someone else can maintain your equipment, then that means that they know just as much about your equipment as you do. But that's me. I'm just a little dumb girl on the council. But that just don't make sense to me. If you're going to buy their equipment some kind of way, they're going to manufacture it to where the product can suit their training, their whatever, because that's the, to protect the company's interests. But again, I had a motion, uh, Mr. Pro Tem, at the time, if you don't mind, uh, at the appropriate time.
It's the appropriate time, councillor Scales.
Then I'd like to make a motion, sir, that we, uh, uh, bring this item back before, well, one week delay until we can get the, uh, questions aforementioned answered, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Lundie. Uh, motion to, uh, delay this item. You said for a week. Councillor Scales?
Sure.
Okay. Ready for the vote, Ms. Clerk?
Voting should be up. That vote should be up.
That item passes with no, one no vote from councillor Rafferty. The item will be delayed for one week. Next item?
Should be item thirty-eight. A resolution setting a public hearing July the twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen to consider adoption of ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number Z A C. Two thousand and fifteen dash seven to change zone, district boundaries from B six Health and Institutional District to B four Central Business District filed by Haynes Hollis, representing owner Children's Hospital for the property located at seventeen twenty-five Eighteenth Street South, situated in the southwest quarter of section thirty-six, township seventeen South, three west Birmingham. And this is a first reading.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second.
Uh, Scott Abbott, Rafferty?
All right, voting should be open. Council member, okay, that vote should be up.
That item passes. The, uh, public hearing will be set for July twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen. Um, next item?
Should be addendum item thirty-nine. A resolution approving the following expense accounts. Liquorade Cade, administrative assistant to the mayor, mayor's office, Atlanta, Georgia, one thousand seventy-two dollars and fifty-nine cents, made to tenth through the thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Americans with Disabilities National Symposium Conference. Stephen Hoyt, councillor, city council, Washington District, Columbia, one thousand six hundred ninety dollars and thirty-three cents, March the seventh through the eleventh, two thousand and fifteen, to attend the National League of Cities. Kimberly Jenkins, committee assistant, city council, Houston, Texas, one thousand four hundred ten dollars and thirty-two cents, made to twentieth through twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Neighborhood USA Conference. Cheryl Kidd, administrator, city council, Montgomery, Alabama, three hundred dollars and fifty-four cents, April twenty-second and the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, to attend the Reach Alabama Association of Nonprofits Summit. Marcus Lundie, councillor, city council, Washington District, Columbia, one thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty cents, March the eighth through the tenth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend the National League of Cities. Melanie Martin, community resource representative, mayor's office, Houston, Texas, one thousand four hundred nine dollars, made nineteen through the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Neighborhood USA Conference. Kathy Purdue, senior community resource representative, mayor's office, Houston, Texas, one thousand six hundred seventy-eight dollars, made in nineteenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Neighborhood USA Conference. Michael Shain, community resource representative, mayor's office, Houston, Texas, one thousand four hundred nine dollars, made in nineteenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Neighborhood USA Conference. Sheila Tyson, councillor, city council, Mobile, Alabama, four hundred sixty-three dollars and ten cents, April the twenty-second through the twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend the Regional Justice Leadership Summit. Florence City Underwood, community resource representative, mayor's office, Houston, Texas, one thousand four hundred nine dollars, made nineteenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Neighborhood USA Conference.
Continue with item forty.
Forty?
Yeah.
A resolution approving the following expense accounts. Terry Burney, chief administrative analyst, mayor's office, Houston, Texas, one thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents, made nineteenth through twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Neighborhood USA Conference. Roy Colson, assistant to the mayor, mayor's office, Montgomery, Alabama, six hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-six cents, April sixth through the eighth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend meeting with Ukrainian ambassador Barbara Harris, administrative analyst, mayor's office, Washington District, Columbia, one thousand ninety-four dollars and sixty-four cents, made the tenth through the twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend the National Summit on Youth Violence Prevention. Tanika Harrow, administrative analyst, mayor's office, Hartford, Connecticut, one thousand seven hundred sixteen dollars and ninety-six cents, made the sixteenth through the twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend International Institute Municipal Clerks Conference. Brendan La High, administrative assistant to the mayor, mayor's office, Tampa, Florida, one thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents, April twenty-third through the twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend the National Forum for Black Public Administrators Leadership Forum. April Odom, director of communications, mayor's office, New York City, New York, one thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy cents, made the seventeenth through the twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Birmingham Business Alliance Fly-In Media Tour. William Parker, councillor, city council, New York, New York, one thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars and eleven cents, April the twelfth and the thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend the Clinton Global Meeting. Jarvis Patton, chief of operations, mayor's office, Houston, Texas, one thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents, made the twentieth through the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Neighborhood USA Conference. Kimberly Rafferty, councillor, city council, Washington District, Columbia, two thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-six cents, made the seventh through the twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Infrastructure Week. James Robeson, councillor, city council, Montego Bay, Jamaica, three thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars and eleven cents, March the eighth through the fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Jamaica Investment Forum. Kim Weldon, administrative assistant to the mayor, mayor's office, Hartford, Connecticut, one thousand seven hundred sixteen dollars and ninety-six cents, made sixteen through the twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend the International Institute Municipal Clerks Conference.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Clerk. Do we have a motion for items thirty-nine and forty? That's, uh, councillor Rafferty and Lundie. Uh, we have one speaker to the item. Councillor Abbott?
Uh, yes. Uh, Mr. President, you know, I'm not a big fan of all the travel that we do. And I've been talking with people in the departments, um, just people, about the upcoming budget. If you take a look at the travel, have you ever noticed who's doing all the travel? It's members of the mayor's staff and the city council and our staffs. That's who does almost. Now, the police, every once in a while, they go somewhere and maybe a fire personnel person, a handful of other people. So how are we? Now, the departments are where the work gets done. You know, what, what happens in the city is done by the departments, not the mayor and the city council. But we're doing all the traveling. How do they get trained? Well, I've been told that if it's not on a webcast, they don't get any training. So, and you know, that may just be a few people's opinion, but it seems to me that if traveling's going to be done, it should be done by the people who are actually doing the work and who need the training. And in some cases, you know, they have to get continuing education units to maintain their, their certifications and things. And it just concerns me that the elected officials and their staffs are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on travel, whereas the people who do the work are not allowed to go anywhere even for training. That just concerns me. And I, and I realize the police go to training every once in a while. every once in a while, but it just seems to me, if you look, you just, just start circling who is doing the traveling on these long lists of travel, and it's us. And some of us just repeatedly, over and over and over and over. So I see that as a big concern, and I think we need to start paying attention to who's doing all the travel. And you know, maybe look at the people who actually need to do some instead of the people who just want to do some. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Abbott. Counselor Scales?
Thank you, Ms. Pro Tem. Well, let me just say this, just for public consumption. I've said this before, previously, in regard to the council. And I'm, I'm going to only speak for myself, so I have to definitely give a precursor before I speak because I'm telling the truth as I see it. I don't think that that's a fair comment if council members are working too, if they are going somewhere and they are working. This council member believes that if you want a vacation, you do it on your time and your dime. But now, if we also want to reel in some stuff, then let's talk about the fact that, you know, the public needs to know the mayor has a credit card, that nobody on this council has said all of these thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars that he's able to travel on. And let me just say this. I don't care when the ma, mayor travels, as long as it's productive to the city. If it's unproductive, then not. But nobody's talking about taking away his credit card, but it's a shame when you got council members, and I'm not saying that every trip should be whatever. All I can say is that we do have a budget. We have a budget. We, we can't go over that budget. And I want the public to be made aware of that. So when anybody calls and they are irate because they figure, well, it's your travel that could have got my street paved. Well, I want you to call the council administrator and ask, you need to find out in writing, how much money our council members per their office are able to spend. They cannot, the council, not the mayor, because he got a credit card. But the council has a budget. They can't go over that budget. So if we are going so-called over the budget, then I want to see that in writing where and how. That needs to, that, that needs to be noted. Because the reason why I say that is that people approach council members in public, and unlike the mayor, we don't have security. So if I think that you are part of the reason why I'm having to go up in my benefits or whatever the case may be, and it does happen, because that happened one time when this issue came up about benefits, and rightfully so, but the firefighters and their wives or their husbands, they approached me wherever, whether it was at church, whether it was at, in the grocery store, wherever they could find you. So I want to bring clarity to that because I can say for me, as a council member, if I go anywhere, I'm working so hard that none of my colleagues can ever say that Council Scales is going out after hours because that's the way that is. So I don't ever want it to be said, council members don't work. So I'm trying not to be offended with that statement because hopefully everybody's working when they go. Otherwise, I don't understand. And most of us, if we come back, like myself, when I went to Harvard, I came back and instantly started implementing things in my district. So with that having said, I'm going to leave that at that because I know that this travel issue is not going to solve the city's deficit and is not going to solve these workers getting their rightful pay for a day's work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Scales. Counselor Tyson?
Thank you. And I would like to, to say that the money that is allocated for our travel can only be spent on the travel that we receive, and it's not a large amount of money. And, and if you're going to really look into things when people travel, I know when I go to training, I know what I do in my district, and it shows. And I do give a report, and I, I make it available to where the other council people can implement it in their district. Just getting and keeping it for yourself still is not doing the city any good because we all have the same problems just about in our, in our districts. So that's why I try to share the information when I do get it. But if you're going to truly look into the travel, look into the travel of the people that you see that have spent over their mon, amount of money that they have received, and to just throw it out like that and for the, to just throw it in the air to the public, not letting the public know that the money that we receive can only be spent on travel, it can't be spent on paving roads and all of that. I think that's unfair. And a lot of our, we have one, probably one district probably don't need none of the, don't have none of the problems that our districts have. I know on the western side of town, we have a lot of problems. And some of the districts do not have the problems that we have over on the western side of town. So when I go to, to train, and I don't even have to, I, I don't even think I have to speak to the public because they know it, but just do not, I just don't think it's fair to say that and to make your colleagues look bad and like we're not doing anything. And we need to look at and add up this travel among each other and see who have actually traveled past their budget. And I can guarantee you it won't be me.
Thank you, Counselor Tyson. Counselor Abbott, second time?
Yeah, and obviously I am having a real difficulty lately articulating my point. My point is the departments where the people are who do the work that gets done in the city of Birmingham are not allowed to travel to a great extent. They don't have training, but the people who are doing the travel are us. That was the point, is not to say that we're the problem, but why are the people in the departments not allowed to travel for training? Where is the equity there when they're actually doing all of the stuff that we want to have done in the city? Because we want all the departments to do excellent jobs. I'm just concerned about that, that we have plenty of money for travel and there's not money in the departments for continuing education, for education much at all. That's my concern. It's just something that I think we need to look at. So I am not necessarily impugning anybody who wants to travel. My God, we're all elected and we can all travel if we want to. But what about the people doing the work? That's the question. Just something to think about. You know, we have lots of things to think about up here, but that's one of them I've been thinking about and noticing, you know, where the travel is being done and by whom. It's not the people doing the work.
Thank you, Counselor Abbott. Counselor Scales, second time?
Sure. Let me, Ms. Pro Tem, Chaz is over there. So we can make sure that we, we bring some facts out to, to how this thing works. What is our travel budget that's assigned to each office, Mr. Mitchell? Do you know right off? You can estimate if you don't know.
Twelve thousand five.
I'm sorry?
Twelve thousand five hundred.
Can you say that a little louder so the public can hear exactly the amount of money so that we don't, you know, when I read these little crazy blogs and they don't know what they're talking about? What was the amount? You said again?
Twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Twelve thousand five hundred dollars, which is not going to cure not one problem at City Hall. That's why I want to stop this from being a news item and put the facts out there just as they are. Twelve thousand five hundred dollars. All you have to do is multiply twelve thousand five hundred dollars times nine, and that's going to give you your budget. And if somebody can quickly add that up, including myself, then, then I'll be able to give that to you because that bothers me. The other thing is, speaking of those that are in department heads, the public needs to know, we do have a mayor council act. This council, no other council, will ever be able to tell the mayor and give his staff, starting with the gentleman, the handsome gentleman that's sitting next to me, Mr. Patton, on down. That's why we always have to ask in council meeting, do you mind if we speak to ex-department head? Because we can't give directives. So if the mayor is not permitting his staff, the workers of the city of Birmingham, outside of central staff, and those who are directly in our office, then if he's not affording them additional training or travel, that's on the mayor because the council is not prohibiting that. If that's what's being stated this morning, and I'm, I, you know, I get you, Ms. Abbott, I'm equally as articulate as you are. So the, the department heads don't work at the pleasure of the council. If they're not permitted to travel, if something is going on in that area, that's not a decision for the council to make. It never has been. And you will never find a law that's going to say that. So when we talk about elected officials traveling, again, I want to say this. I am going to do the math, and twelve, that's a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars annually. Twelve thousand five hundred dollars times nine is one hundred twelve thousand dollars, at twelve, one hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars. So if that's going to cure some city debt, if that's going to do, increase over our four thousand employees, then great. Other than that, I want this to stop becoming a news cycle because it's not even worthy of it. If you do your homework and do some investigative reporting, you would find that to be the truth. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Scales. Ms. Patton?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, Mr. Vice President. It's very unusual for a travel request to come to my office that we don't approve. Now, you may want to talk to your department heads, and ask your department heads, why don't they allow their employees to travel more if they've got travel in their budgets? But I can guarantee you, if a hundred come across my desk, we can approve, we approve ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent of them. I can assure you of that. So the problem is not in the mayor's office by denying anyone travel. If it's reasonable travel, if it makes sense, then we grant that travel. If you've got five people going to Montgomery and five people want, from the same department, and five people want to drive five cars, we say go back and drive one car, two cars. We'll make some adjustments there. But as far as approving or not approving travel when department heads send it for training experiences, we have no problem with approving ninety-nine percent of those travels.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. And I'm addressed as the president today because I'm presiding over council meeting.
You are the president, in case anybody doesn't know. You're presiding, and you're the president. You're not the pro tem, you're the president.
I'm living my glory for a couple hours. Thank you. Any more discussion on the travel item? Seeing Ms. Clerk, ready to vote on item thirty-nine and forty?
I need a motion, I'm sorry.
Move it.
Second.
That's Lundie Rafferty?
Okay, voting, voting should be open.
Okay.
That vote should be up.
The item passes with one no vote from Counselor Abbott. And just so you know, for public record, these travel items are actually the closing out receipts of travel expenses. These were previously brought to the council for approval, and this is the actual process of closing those receipts out for travel. Next item, Ms. Clerk?
Should be forty-one. Would you like me to do forty-two or forty-three?
Uh, those, oh, yes, please, go ahead, do all three of them.
Item forty-one, a resolution approving the following advanced expense account. Gregory Jones, assistant to the mayor, mayor's office, Atlanta, Georgia, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ten cents, June the twenty-first and the twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, to attend roundtable conference on American Studios and Issues, I'm sorry, American Studies and Issues. Item forty-two, a resolution approving the itemized expense account of city employees. Item forty-three, a resolution approving the advanced expense account of city employees.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. Need a motion for item forty-one, forty-two, and forty-three.
Some move?
Second.
That's Rafferty and Parker, the items before us. Ready for the vote, Ms. Clerk?
All right, voting should be open now. And that vote should be up.
Those items pass with one no vote from Counselor Abbott. Next item?
Oh, the newer speakers.
Uh, we have one speaker. Do we have a motion to spin the rules for speakers?
Some move? Second?
Oh, in favor, let it be known by saying I.
Aye.
Oppose Mr. Jenkins.
Mr. Mayor Willie Jenkins, mayor of Collegeville, come on up. Please state your name and address.
Willie Jenkins, sixteen Quinney, Quinney Fifth Avenue, Noah, uh, to, to the mayor, I've been, uh, I guess, answering, and to the city council. I'd like to announce that we are getting ready for our annual Carver High School reunion this year. Want to invite y'all to come. First, we in October, we getting ready, we're going to have a meeting Friday. So you mighty Carver around, look out. We getting ready for the mighty Carver High School reunion this year. Also, I want to, Carolyn Johnson was had, they had a water ceremony at the Sheraton. I went down there, and I want to thank God for Carolyn Johnson. This is, this the Lord have, this a little gift for, the Lord have with you everywhere you go. And I just want to, when she, when she come, she not here, I just going to present, this is some gift, a little plaque I'm going to be give Carolyn Johnson. She worked so hard to stop the violence, and I want to present that to her when she come back, you know, she in, in the office. I don't know if they said, God can tell you, bless Carolyn Johnson because she is, she is word, she is worded to be praised, and she is worded to, uh, work, work for the I people. And I want to say, uh, Judge John Bud Allen Williams, he a member of William Parker for Collegeville. He been around a long time, they have love for him. He, uh, he passed on last week. They had a funeral at Realm Pruitt Church. Everybody know John. And I want to say, you know, my prayers go out to William, the William family. And I want to say, uh, and also Dwight Shepherd, he, he a former graduate from Carver too. Uh, Dwight Shepherd, he graduated from mighty Carver High School. His service last week. And also, our vacation in Bible school, we'll start next week at Old Street Baptist Church. We'll invite council, the council member to come. It's going to start at six o'clock. And it's going to be not this week, but the next week because Chris invited is having their vacation Bible school this week. And I'd like to say, um, they're getting ready for, like I said, they're getting ready for the reunion. And I would like to say happy birthday, Mary Johnson, my class, my classmate, Carver High School. She had a birthday Sunday, and I would like to say happy birthday to Ms. Mary Johnson. And William Parker, I'm ready for the movie day when you get ready, District Four, Collegeville. I'm ready to, getting ready for the, pass out the flyers for the District Four, Collegeville. So I'm ready for to, uh, pass the word out, you know, and, and the master, oh, that's right, the master, city council, will be at the master on the second Sunday, the men of praise. Want to invite all y'all to come to Master Baptist Church on the second Sunday. I did go to the fight, did go to the fight, there people in there to the fight. Congratulations when the winner, I did get a chance to go to the, to the boxing. So congratulations. And I will let y'all know, they're going to give me appreciation at my church, and my pastor is going to give me appreciation. I will let y'all know when it going to be.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins, and glad you enjoyed the fight, like many of us did in Birmingham. Oh, the new business. Okay, Counselor Scales, you, are you ready?
As always, I want to thank the citizens of District One, as well as the city of Birmingham for affording me the opportunity to be their voice. I do want to thank everyone that came out on last week's budget process hearing. Monday, we were in District Six at New Pilgrim. Then Tuesday, we were at Bethel Baptist Church, District Nine. Wednesday, I had the pleasure of being over there at Avondale Elementary School with Counselor Abbott, District Three. And then District One was at Parkway Christian Fellowship. I do want to tell everyone, it's important as we go through these budget workshops, because now we've gone from hearings, letting you know about the budget process, to now we're at the point of crunching these numbers and putting it together. I'm in, I'm asking you, as a counselor, I want you to be actively involved in how your tax dollars are being spent. If you're concerned or you want to know more about the process, call two five four twenty-two ninety-four. That's two five four twenty-two ninety-four, so that you can get as much information as you possibly can in terms of finding out how we're going to balance the three hundred eighty-nine million dollar general fund budget. That's very important. Also, I do want to say, we have some upcoming events. We're going to be telling you all more about it. We're always excited about our Music and Movie Festival. It brings the city together, and more importantly, it's hosted by District One, so you'll be hearing more about that. Last but not least, I do want to say that I'm very grateful that we're beginning to get some tractions relative to our parks and letting people know about what's happening with the parks in terms of the bond money. That's real important. People voted back in two thousand thirteen or twelve, I believe, but now they're ready to see some manifestations. And so I look forward to that. We do have one neighborhood meeting that meets tonight. That's at Sun Valley. They meet at the East Pinson Recreation Center. So I just want to make sure we invite you all out for that. Johnny Hawkins is the president. They meet at seven PM promptly. And one more thing, this is about the Employees and Family Day, July eleventh. I want to thank Mr. Patton for giving me this notification this morning. It's from ten AM to two PM, July eleventh. So save the date, mark your calendars. If this is something that you want to come out and help the city to, um... If this is something that you want to come out and help the city to, uh, oh, you probably didn't want me to do that, right? Okay, well, nevertheless, thank all of your city employees, whenever you see them, whether they picking up the garbage, police, or fire, and most importantly, those who help us to run the city. So again, I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Scales. Councilor Tyson?
Thank you. Um, I'd like to announce that the American Negro League Baseball Association and Monet Davis and her team will be traveling to Birmingham on the twenty-fourth at Rick Woodfield, six P.M., and we're asking for everyone to come out. They will actually be playing the Tittysville All-Stars, but up on the Travel League of Baseball, that is up on the Willie May RBIs. Don't forget, last year, we actually won the RBI tournament with the Major League Academy. So they will actually be traveling to Birmingham, they are doing a tour. So I would like for everyone to please come out and support our young people. These, this is a young team, they are trying to make sure they make a statement, and we want to beat, uh, Philadelphia team in this tournament. And we really do have a good team, and they are from all over Birmingham, not only on the twenty-fourth at six P.M. And we're asking for people to come out, and we're gonna try to give the team, Mr. Patton, we need to give them a reception, um, the day before. But when they come in, I've actually had the opportunity to talk to the manager, and the young people will be in a day before, and I would like to give them a little nice reception out at Rick Woodfield. And, well, we might have to do a pot look, I don't care, I want to make sure the children know that they welcome here in Birmingham, because our babies don't get a chance to travel like that, I know the ones that's on the team, because we had to actually, you know, hustle up the money and everything for them to go to the tournament last year, and they won everything. We beat Canada, we really, they did a, Papa Jack did a great job on representing Birmingham and the state of Alabama. Okay, on Wednesday, June the seventeenth, Great Mountain Neighborhood will be meeting in, at the Smithfield Library at four-thirty. Saturday, Saturday, June the twentieth, North Tittysville will be meeting at the Tittysville Library at eleven A.M. I would like to thank everyone for supporting the, Deontay Wilder, um, just did a great job on that, uh, WBC heavyweight title, and I, I'm just, I was very excited about that game, I actually follow boxing. And they also have boxing in Homewood, and at Jeff State, and in Tuscaloosa. So if you're not a boxing fan, it's something to look into, it really is, it's very exciting, uh, sport. This Thursday, June eighteenth, from three to eight, there will be a community fun day at Woodwood Park. And actually, what we're doing, we're, um, getting all the nonprofits that's in District Six, and we're just having a, like a, get, get together with all of the people in District Six with our nonprofit, where they can actually see what they have to offer. And we want the people in District Six to take advantage of the things that we have to offer, so the ones that's not in District Six, you are welcome to come. On, um, Friday, the nineteenth, from nine to two, at Princeton Tower, there will be Princeton Tower Senior Citizen Facility. Uh, District Six West End Wellness Council invite you to a health and wellness, um, fair. The goal is to increase health awareness throughout screenings, education, promoting positive behavior, and choices. So we're asking everyone to come out, it's actually a free event. I would like to remind everyone that's a veteran, if you're in the military, or you're out of the military, no matter what branch of the military you serve in, the DAV provides help with filling out benefit claims through the military veterans, every Tuesday from ten to two, every fourth Thursday from six to eight. The address is two-three-eight Second Avenue North. We're asking for everyone to come out to, uh, participate in that, if you are a veteran. I want to make sure that you know that we are giving away school uniforms and school supplies. The deadline, to turn, you can come, you can call my office at two-five-four twenty-three fifty-eight to fill out an application. You will receive four uniforms, four shirts, four, four shirts, four pants, and a bag of school supplies. We have the list from each school in District Six. We will be giving it out, and you have to the twenty-eighth, to turn in your application, so call my office, where I can get your application, and we can get all the correct sizes, because we want our children on, uh, August the fifth, to make sure they have uniforms to go back to school. And I know I'm running over. Okay, thank you, this is all my announcements.
Thank you so much, Councilor Tyson. Councilor Parker?
Thank you. Uh, just wanted to, a couple of announcements. Uh, the park board meeting will be in the morning at nine o'clock at Legion Field in the press room, uh, because, um, we're still having renovations done in the administrative part of Legion Field. And so that's tomorrow at nine A.M. And also, Mr. Jenkins had one more announcement that I think we all would agree with, to wish all the fathers a happy Father's Day this Sunday. So that was, uh, from Mr. Jenkins, but I think we all will have all those in our announcements, but he wanted to make sure he was, yeah, his announcements were noted. Anyway, that's all, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, thank you, Mr. Jenkins, for that Father's Day greeting. Uh, Councilor Rafferty?
Thank you. Um, first, Neighborhood Meetings, Brown Springs will be meeting this Thursday, June eighteenth, at Saint James Baptist Church, six P.M. And then Monday, the twenty-second, we have three Neighborhood Meetings. Southeast Lake meets at East Lake United Methodist Church at six, Crestwood South meets at the Crestwood Community Education Center at six-thirty, and Huffin meets at Corner, Cornerstone School at seven P.M. As far as community events, June ninth, Roughness Mountain was designated an award recipient for a national grant through the Wells Fargo and the National Fish and Wildlife Service. This grant will be used for habitat restoration work on Roughness Mountain, along with educational programming about the importance of native landscaping. So I definitely wanted to, um, give them a big congratulations. Um, Boy Scouts of America will be hosting Access Day Camp for Boys with Disabilities at Roughness Mountain on June twenty-second through the twenty-fifth, from nine A.M. until four P.M. This camp is open to boys ages seven to nineteen, and they'll get a unique perspective, because most children with disabilities don't get to have a really good summer camp outing in a nature setting. So the Boy Scouts are volunteering to hold this, it's a four-week camp, and participants, or, or, I'm sorry, a five-day camp. And participants will be learning about scouting, field trips, uh, doing field trips and activities, and learning about nature. Lunch will be provided, and the camp is free. So if you know, the camp is limited to thirty children, so councilors, if you know anybody in your district, a, a young man disabled who would like to get with the Boy Scouts and have some fun, I have the contact information for you now. You can call the Boy Scouts of America office at four-four-one-five-seven-six-three. Um, I'd like to wish everybody, Sunday was Flag Day, and, um, one of the passions of District Two is we replaced all of the American flags in the city of Birmingham that need to be replaced. Um, and we made sure that was done before Flag Day, and, um, I, I'm going to assume, Mr. Fancher, that Public Works disposed of them to the Boy Scouts, so they can also handle that properly. Um, Mr. Patton, we also hosted this weekend the Alabama Marine League Detachment Convention. Um, that, uh, that was down on two-eighty, and I think it's the first time in five or six years that we'd hosted the convention, and, and they were absolutely enthused to be in Birmingham, they really enjoyed the experience. And then I have four things for you, Mr. Patton. One, Roebuck Springs would like a full report, if they could, from Bakara concerning the status of the South Roebuck Baseball Park, what's going on there. They're more concerned with the blight, the growth, the growth that's coming back up, the pool, what's happening with that, the dispensation. So they're just asking for a full status report. Also, um, and Mr. Bidis is not here, but he's familiar with this. On Valley Drive between Dogwood and Crest Avenue in Roebuck Springs, there is, in the, in the center of the lane, one of the lanes, the road is caving in. And they, uh, Mr. Bidis sent inspectors out, they said it was Jefferson County Storms, or Jefferson County Sewer, and we haven't, it's getting a lot worse, and I haven't seen any movement by anyone coming out there to affect a repair. Um, also, there's an access road, um, on Roebuck Springs Road that belongs to the Birmingham Water Works Board. And Mr. Fancher, you may know about this, because you have, keep having to send Public Works out to clean up. After a rain event, the access road, all of the rubble and the debris comes down on the public right away, and we have to clean it up. So any help we can get to have the Water Works Board do an improvement, so that the drainage off their service road is not being dumped, and I'm talking about dirt and gravel and such, onto the public right away. That way, we don't have to pay to clean up their mess. Um, and last, um, if I may, Mr. Fancher, this, this is a question, and you can email me this answer. In the eastern section, we have a number of neighborhood people who pick up trash and brush in between the trash and brush schedule, especially mattresses, when people just throw them out, and they need to know where to drop them off. And I think there used to be a drop-off dumpster at the eastern office, but I don't know if it's still there or not. And I know that sometimes they can get into the eastern landfill, and sometimes they can't. So if you can just give me that information, I'll share it with them, and they'll keep assisting Public Works and doing their job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rafferty, and I would also recommend you put your questions to the mayor's office and email correspondents to make sure it gets done. Thank you so much. Councilor Lundie?
Thank you, leadership. First, want to send kudos out to one of Birmingham's favorite daughters who happens to be in the, uh, midst today. She has two of the prettiest little girls I've ever laid eyes on, Valentina and Genevieve. And just want to thank Erica for being here today, um, and all the hard work that you do on behalf of the city, and, uh, our efforts around cleanup. So thank you very much. Also, Councilor Hoyt, on last Tuesday, after council meeting, had one of the finest programs I'd ever had the privilege of attending. And just want to, uh, send a shout-out all the way across the pond to my friend, Councilor Hoyt, for his education with a purpose. Um, he highlighted all of his vendors, and it was, and for scholarships, and I just was excited about, uh, what, uh, our council colleague is doing in District Eight, and, uh, the fine program that he put on. So to Ms. Kimberly, Ms. Langford, kudos to you guys for, uh, helping Councilor Hoyt put on such a fantastic event. Also, Latonya Millhouse, on this past Saturday, had her, uh, Man Cave Mentoring Event at Enslie Live, and it was fantastic. Got a chance to share some of the clothes that I had outgrown with some of the young men present, uh, some shirts, ties, and pants, and to speak with them on some of the things that motivated me when I was their age. So I look forward to participating with Latonya Millhouse again on, uh, such a wonderful event for our youth. Uh, also, hats off to Bobby Benton and the United Fellowship Breakfast. Uh, they celebrated their anniversary on this past Sunday at the Sixth Avenue Baptist Church, and it was fantastic. Simply fantastic, um, you know, hats off to them for the work that they do in our communities. They gave away, uh, monies to nonprofits as well. And lastly, on last night, uh, with many of our colleagues, including the mayor, over in Paris at the airshow, uh, we had the privilege of having the vice mayor, Mr. Jarvis Patton, step in and pinch-hit for the mayor. And I am excited that we had a wonderful, uh, meeting. Uh, it was led by Mr. John Cologne, and the plan went out to Pratt on what we're going to do around, uh, rebuilding, uh, the areas that were ravaged by the April twenty-seventh, two thousand and eleven tornadoes. So, uh, Mr. Cologne's team, Matthew and Amber and Quanti, Quanti had some food there that was second to none. And, uh, he, Mr. Cologne, really made it plain for the folks and answered their questions. Uh, and by having the vice mayor there, some of the folks there, you know, really had questions around grass, and had questions around dilapidated housing, so we were able to address those questions in writing. So I'm pretty sure that, uh, Vice Mayor Patton is going to look at those inquiries from our constituents to see that they are routed properly. Uh, but again, I am just excited about community development, Mr. Cologne, and what he's doing in the Pratt community. Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Thank you, Mr. Patton, I greatly appreciate your participation. It was last minute, but you stayed the duration, and the folks in Pratt just wanted me to tell you thank you. That concludes my announcement.
Thank you, Councilor Lundie. Uh, Councilor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
The Budget and Finance Committee meeting will be held on Monday, June twenty-second, at four P.M. in Conference Rooms D and E. I want to remind you that submissions are due on or before twelve P.M. on Wednesday, June seventeenth, which is tomorrow. I want to apologize to the people upset last week with my comments, um, about the budget and the people who don't reside in Birmingham. I did not articulate my position well. Normally, introverts are people who think about things a long time before they ever start running their mouths, and I didn't do that. So, I want to clarify, because sometimes you mean what you say, but you don't say it right. I cannot commit the other members of the council, but my first priority is to the residents of the city of Birmingham. Residents. We represent them, they elect us, and they expect us to put them first, and I put them first. They also happen to be the people who pay the salaries that we receive, the very generous salaries, and the very generous salaries that the city employs, and, and they pay our benefits, they pay for everything. So the residents are my number-one priority. Second priority would be city employees and the people who are kind enough to operate their businesses out of the city of Birmingham, so that we have those revenues, and we have those employees coming to Birmingham. And third, and really way down on the list, would be people who don't live in Birmingham, don't work in Birmingham, but they have their opinions. I'll listen or read anyone's opinion, but I do have my priorities. So I want to tell Mr. Baker, I did read the information that you provided to me, because I always read everything. And, um, you know, at this point in time, I'm thinking that a five percent merit raise plus a two percent COLA is pretty generous, and I was amazed that the mayor did all that. Uh, he must have been feeling really good the day he decided what was going to be in the budget. Um, so that is that. And then, I want to get back to my list, because my time is running out. Uh, the budget hearings were great, I think it is going to be an excellent idea for us to go back after we make a decision and tell people what we did and why we did it. Um, we may have to do a little dancing. Uh, I ran into my colleague, Mr. Lundie, and his wife at Art on the Rocks at the Museum of Art. It was packed to the gills, and people were having a ball, and I don't know where all those people came from, but they were having fun. And the food trucks, that was a cute idea and very different. Um, we do have the BOE, of the Board of Education Reception for the new superintendent on tonight, this evening, this afternoon, at the Museum of Art. And tonight, movies in Avondale Park start at eight o'clock, The Lorax is the movie, and that has been packed with people. Even though it's getting kind of warm outside at night, it has just been packed, chock-a-block with people, so that's great for Birmingham. And, um, on Monday, this coming Monday, Five Points South and Crestwood South meet, and on this coming Tuesday, Redmont Park meets, and I apologize for going over.
You're fine, Councilor Abbott, and thank you for your announcements. Oui oui, bonjour, comment allez-vous? Uh, and that's for my colleagues that are over in Paris. And, um, I do have a couple announcements to make as it relates to today's meetings. Uh, Councilor Hoyt, this is befitting, uh, his thought for today is from Phil Jackson, the former basketball coach at the Chicago Bulls. And we got the finals tonight with the Cavs and the Golden State Warriors. Good luck, Councilor Lundie. Uh, I'm pulling for the Warriors. Wisdom is an overmatch for strength, and I think it's the last game too, Mr. Patton. Uh, we do have a request. And I think it's the last game too, Mr. Patton. We do have a request for the mayor. Poor thing, Councilor Tyson. Mrs. Susan Palmer, President of Central Park Neighborhood Association, requests that the overgrown properties vacant lots be cut in the Central Park area. Mrs. Palmer did not provide the fiscal address for each of the properties. However, she emailed the attached pictures, and I have those for you, Mr. Patton. And Mrs. Palmer can be reached at 205-602-8722. In District Eight, we also have Green Acres Neighborhood Association Meeting will be held on June 16, 2015, at 6:30 PM at Lifting Christ Worship Center. Enslie Neighborhood Association Meeting will be held on June 18, 2015, at 6:00 PM at Enslie Recreation Center. And the Public Safety Committee Meeting will be held on Monday, July 6, at 4:00 at City Hall here, at the council chambers on third floor. And man up, everybody, man up. The Man Up Breakfast will be held on this Saturday, June 20, 2015, from 8:30 to 11:00 at the Crossplex upstairs in the banquet room. I'm looking forward to attending, along with my colleagues. Councilor Hoyt has done this event for, shoot, I think three years now. And it's been very inspiring to see men come together, and it's very special that we're coming together on Father's Day weekend. Now, for my announcements, good friend of the family, and good friend of this city hall and this community, Bob Dickerson Jr. lost his father, so I'd like to move for a resolution of sympathy.
A second.
Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
That item passes, and thank you, Council, for your prayers and support for the Dixon family. And our prayers are with you, Bob, and your family at this time. We have summer camps taking place. A lot of activities that parents want to know about for their kids throughout the city of Birmingham. The West African Dance and Drum classes are available, Councilor Tyson, at Harrison Park for all ages, 11:15 AM to 1:30 PM on Saturdays. And also, at Harrison Park, you have an exercise boot camp for 12... If you're 12 years old to 50 years old. On Saturday, please contact Harrison Park for specific boot camp times to participate in those summer camps. And we appreciate Park and Rec Office for providing this information to us for the summer. Back to Fight Night, and I cannot stop talking about Fight Night. I mean, it was off the chain. And Showtime did a great job in broadcasting our city, publicizing the city of Birmingham in their broadcast. You know, Deontay Wilder, Councilor Tyson, you can attest to this, he promoted Birmingham. He promoted the state of Alabama. We made history that night, and it was truly tremendous. And I still feel like I've been... I was in a dream last weekend after watching that WBC heavyweight bout. But it was just a great event, and even Don King acknowledged the history of Birmingham and how well Birmingham was. And there's a lot of history with Don King, but we'll leave that alone. But it was just truly great to see this take place in our great city. And I hope that Unified Heavyweight Bout comes, championship bout, that Deontay brings it back to Birmingham, and we can do it even bigger and better. I have a special announcement, and it's befitting, because it's my father. He... His birthday was on Sunday, June 14th. He turned, and he had a great time of celebrating, so Happy Father's Day.
Turned what?
He turned...
He turned?
Yeah, he turned. Yeah, and so...
My son turned the same day.
The same day, and the 4th, Flag Day. We do that every year, don't we? We sure do. Happy birthday to your son, Councilor Abbott. And it's befitting that it's Father's Day weekend coming up. And love you, Dad, for all you do, and the support you've given me, and the foundation that you and my mother have provided for me. Also, Neighborhood Meetings Garden Highlands will meet at Mount Halya Baptist Church on today at 7:00. And on Thursday, Hillman Neighborhood Meeting will take place, and Germania Park Neighborhood Meeting will take place on Thursday. I believe that's it. And you got one more announcement, Councilor Tyson? Trying to make it to lunch.
Okay. I'm looking for a committee assistant for District Six responsibilities, answering the phone, typing letters, responding to emails and requests, scheduling meetings, and taking minutes. Good computer skills, attending Neighborhood Association Meeting, filling out documents, including policies, budget, and ordinance, creating reports and communication. Please send your resume to sheila.tyson@birminghamal.good. Thank you.
All right. That is a job opportunity in District Six. Thank you, Councilor Tyson. And also, to my interns, I want to thank you all for your support. Last Monday, for the National Twitter Cast with Opportunities and Jobs with the Millennials, you all spoke very highly on the Twitter. I followed you. And thank you for your input on the kind of jobs and things you'd like to see happen in the city of Birmingham. And that will be reported back from Opportunity Nations, the nonprofit on job opportunity for millennials. So, thank you all so much. I want to thank Charles Lewis for protecting us. Did a great job today with security, and makes sure everything ran well in the hallways, and keeping everything in order. And if there's no other business, I'd like to move to bring this meeting to an end.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
This council meeting is adjourned. Thank you.